Call the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. Would you stand with me, please? I will lead the prayer and Richard will lead the pledge. Stand with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the blessings you've given us and the opportunities in the county that we live in, the government we live under. We pray that you'll be with all the leaders involved and we pray that you'll be with us tonight in this meeting. May good come from this meeting, Heavenly Father. And we pray that you'd just be with us through this meeting and be with us through this holiday time of the year, the giving, the loving, the caring. And may we continue to let that permeate through the next upcoming year. We pray that you'd just be with us tonight. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Place the flag, please. Seated. All roll, please, ma'am.
Rhonda Allen, Richie Boland, Veronica Buchanan, Will Jordan, Mike Kush, Jeff Phillips, Pettis Reed, Steve Sandlin, Mike Vaught, Vincent Windrow, Craig Lynch.
President.
Ab Coram.
Code's Department, David.
Code's Department report for last month is on the table, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll look at those through the meeting. Do you have any questions? Doug, do we have anything withdrawn or deferred?
No, sir, no, I'm sorry. There was a, the first zoning case that was on one mile lane. That application has been deferred on request of the applicant.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir.
I've had a lot of calls on this request and I've talked with David over in the planning department, or building and codes department on this. He's been in violation, been cited. Is this a really kind of a ploy to gain some time, to try to do something here? I mean, we, if the creek gets out, it's gonna, it's probably gonna take these vehicles down the creek and it's gonna really be a mess.
Mr. Sandlin, I really can't speak to what his motives are. I just know that some issues came up today with the applicant himself and he's had an attorney now representing him and there was a letter submitted to our office asking that we defer action on that today.
Okay, so we defer it then till next month?
That's correct.
And, okay, so we're just gonna, are you gonna re-notify everybody, or?
Yes, that's typically our practice. Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
Well?
What is re-notification? Is that added in the paper or is that letters back to the surrounding property owners?
The letters to the surrounding property owners. I mean, we put an ad in the paper as well announcing the meeting like we do every month, but, but yeah, we'll do the letters again as well.
Now, sometimes when it gets deferred, people kind of lose track of when it is and there are a lot of people very interested in this. They'll make sure they get their opportunity to come speak.
Yes, sir.
You know, when that, can you tell us what that meeting date will be then?
January 9th.
January 9th, okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's anyone here with the, Mr. Roberts, about the rezoning and conditional use permit that has been deferred, we will not be looking at that tonight. So if anyone you wish to leave, you're certainly welcome. Okay. Public hearing, new zoning and resolution and map. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. We come tonight to discuss the proposed zoning, proposed zoning ordinance and zoning map. Before we get into just a whole lot of the details with the document itself, and we'll have a copy of the map on the big screen just a little later, we do have part of our consultant team here tonight, Ms. Michelle Kendall, she's with Parsons Brinkerhoff, she's the assistant project manager, and Mr. Bill Terry with Bill Terry and Associates. He was the, really much the person who was instrumental in getting the zoning together in the form that you see it, as well as considerable input from staff. But before I make any comments on the document, I'm just gonna turn it over to Mr. Terry just to have him make a few introductory comments regarding that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner? As you know, Rutherford County has had county zoning in place for many years. And over the years of that county zoning resolution, it was amended many times and not all the amendments actually worked together and worked well, although some did. So this ordinance is a complete revision to bring the county zoning resolution up to date, provide a framework for local and cooperative process for the future development of the county. There were three sections of the present ordinance that were deemed to be working very well and so these have been incorporated totally into the new ordinance. The sections are the planning and development regulations, the floodplain regulations and the sand regulations. The rest of it is all new to you. Major goal in creating this new ordinance was to create an ordinance that is legally defensible in compliance with Tennessee law. And that's what we've tried to do. Some of the major issues that we have addressed and represent a general change to what you're accustomed to is creating a land use classification system that groups similar uses together in activities and describes those activities. This continues the use of conditional uses and incorporates special exception uses which is in accord with state law. Creates special character districts for parts of the county that's also in accord with your locally adopted plan now. And establishes clearly defined administrative procedures for carrying out the ordinance. That is the general opening statement that I would make and it's back over to Doug.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm just gonna go through some of the major changes that we have to the document itself. Some of this will be kind of review material for several of you on the planning commission. I know you've seen this before, but I know there's probably a lot of people in the audience that haven't, so we'll just kind of run through this just briefly. The first, and Mr. Terry kind of alluded to some of this, are the new zoning classifications that we have. We have several zoning classifications now for residential and agricultural and you'll have to forgive me, the computers, you might be seeing it a lot faster here than I'm seeing it on my monitor, so I'm having this to kind of play catch-up here with the monitor. First of all, in our residential agricultural zones, currently, as most people know, most of the county, and I passed out some statistics to you prior to the meeting regarding the amount of the county that's currently zoned R-15, about 94, 95 percent of the counties currently zoned R-15, which allows about three units an acre gross density. It's more like 2.9, it's not exactly three. But what we're proposing is a more of a breakdown in the residential agricultural zones. Of course, we would have an agricultural zone, which would be a five acre minimum lot size. A residential low density, which is RL, which we would propose at a one acre minimum lot size. And then residential medium density, which is pretty much equivalent to the R-15 zoning as we know it today. We also did incorporate, as within our current code, a residential multifamily district and as well as a mobile home park district. It's not really in our code right now. We have a couple of office and institutional zones, office professional and institutional. These are more of transition zones, if you will. Institutional would allow schools, larger assembly type uses. Office professional, of course, would allow a little bit more than the institutional would, but they're both act as more transitional zones. The next set of categories would be the commercial zones. Currently, as you're familiar, and Mr. Terry kind of alluded to this, the way the county currently handles commercial zoning, there really aren't any permitted uses by right in those commercial zones. So typically what we see is a zoning change to say something like services or something like that, and then a conditional use permit on top of that. What we're proposing are, is a little opening that up just a little bit, where we'd have commercial neighborhood, which would be more of your neighborhood friendly type uses, small convenience stores, those kind of things. Commercial services, which would allow heavier commercial uses, and then commercial general, which would be the most, allow, I guess it would allow the most uses in the commercial districts. And then we also propose two industrial zones. Those would be light industrial and heavy industrial. And then as Mr. Terry kind of alluded to, the different character areas, as identified on our comprehensive plan, we identified a number of rural centers, a couple of village neighborhood centers, and then also what we're calling an employment and activity center. We don't have a whole lot of that on the zoning map currently. We do have one employment and activity center, really on the Upps Mill Road area. The rural centers and the village neighborhood centers especially, we have a small amount of rural center on the map currently. The big reason for that is staff feels that these rural centers, as we identify them, such as Christiana, Milton and those areas, we feel that it would be better to take a look at those areas individually, look at Christiana, Milton, Last Castas, those areas, and try to come up with some standards or regulations that would make sense in those areas. You know, what may work in Last Castas may not work in Christiana necessarily. So that's really what we're proposing to do with the character areas. Something else Mr. Terry alluded to, the planning commission and board of commissioners will no longer consider conditional use permit applications. There will be a table that'll list uses by right and special exception in the zoning document itself. We call that the land use activity table, which will be in appendix B. That table will show either uses that are permitted by right, which would be P. They'd be permitted by special exception, which would mean they'd have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or they would just not be permitted at all. And the way we would determine that is by the appendix, next appendix, appendix C, where we have a list of the different uses and how they're classified. So essentially what you would do is look at that appendix C, find out the use you're looking for, figure out how and where it needs to be classified. And essentially how it's gonna work is just a quick table. The activity classification would be broken down into activity types and then the uses would be under that. And as a practical example, say, commercial activities is what you're looking for and you're looking at something like a general retail trade and you're looking at such as something like a department store or hardware store, retail nursery, something to that effect. That's kind of how that will lay out. Just continuing on with the overview of the changes, we have incorporated performance standards, which are currently not in our document. There are several standards that you'll see. We have standards for noise, vibration, odors, glare, et cetera. And these are things that we've shown our codes department director and he feels that these are things that can be enforced. Another major change to the document is the religious facilities. There's been a lot of discussion about that in the last several months and we are proposing to classify those all as community assembly, which would be 2-4 in the zoning book. We'd break those down into three categories. We'd have small assembly, median assembly and large assembly, which would be based on the seating capacity really in the largest area. And they would not be permitted by right in all zones. Currently, the religious uses are permitted by right in all residential zones. So what we're proposing is based on, either it's a small, medium or large, it would be permitted in some districts, special exception in others, or just not permitted depending on size. Now, again, these are all community assembly type uses. These could be lodges, clubs, religious facilities. We're treating them all the same. Just continuing on with some of the overview to the major changes, we've added sections for standards that are applicable to all uses in chapter 11. So regardless of whether or not they're permitted by right or if they're permitted by special exception, they would have to meet the standards detailed in chapter 11. We've talked about this the last couple meetings at the planning commission, just kind of as a staff report item, but new standards for detached accessory structures. Currently, our system is based on up to an acre, one to five acres and then anything above five. But we're proposing to simplify that a little bit and opening that up just a tad. Up to an acre, you'd be allowed 2,000 square foot for any detached accessory structure such as a pole barn or a Dutch barn, something like that. And if it's over an acre, you're allowed 5 percent of the total lot area. Something that we've added to the document as well, based on comments we've heard from the planning commission as well as the public, our conservation subdivisions, these would be allowed in the RL district, which is the area for one unit and an acre, and the standards can be found in chapter 11. Basically what this would be, would be if somebody wanted to, say, if somebody had 100 acres of land and they wanted to develop their subdivision but keep a portion of the land for either open space or to continue farming it or something to that effect, they'd be allowed to have a smaller lot size. We propose a 17,000 square feet minimum lot size as opposed to an acre. They would have a density neutral effect. They would still be allowed just the same amount that they'd be allowed under normal circumstances, but they'd be able to put them on smaller lots. And that way they'd be able to conserve some of the property and still get the development yield out of it. And something else to point out about conservation subdivisions is that that would be a voluntary situation. You're not required to do it that way, but developers would have an option to do that. And we've also added traffic study criteria, which will be in chapter 11, which our subdivision regulations will also reference. As Mr. Terry kind of alluded to, some of the unchanged sections that are currently in that document, the planned unit development regulations, we've pretty much brought those in unchanged, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a minute. Also the flood hazard districts, sign regulations. Now, we've also, there's a few other smaller items that Mr. Terry didn't mention, but such as home-based business standards, and we did tweak those a little bit, and also our accessory dwelling unit standards. Again, we did have to make some small tweaks to a few things just to make it fit within the new context, but generally what you're seeing is pretty much what's currently on the books. Now, we have received a number of concerns, phone calls, emails, whatnot, and I just want to bring this to your attention right now and we can discuss them later. The first one has to do with the rock quarry zoning and regulations. I'll get into this a little bit more when we look at the map here in just a minute, but that's one of the items, as well as the RL versus the RM zoning. Again, if you look at that handout that I presented you regarding the percentages, you know, we're going from about 95 percent, which would be R-15, to about 50, a little over 50 percent for what would be the equivalent of R-15. Also, there's a handout that I passed out to you regarding some open space requirements for planned developments. Currently, our planned development regulations require 20 percent open space in a planned development with half of that being usable open space, you know, for recreation purposes and whatnot. We have received some concerns from some of the members of the development community that feel that might be too high. I see where they're coming from on it and I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. So that, some of that information is presented to you and we can talk more about that. As I told the gentleman who spoke to me about it, since we've changed the planned development regulations, we made the amendments to those a few years ago, pretty much at the same time the economy really started going down, downhill. So we've really not had an opportunity to put this into practice yet. No one's really requested a planned development to this point. So we really haven't had a chance to see how well it functions, but that's a concern that they see. And again, I do see, I see both sides of it, but I just wanted to bring that up for you in case that there be more discussion. So that's pretty much the end of my presentation. I do want to put up the zoning map, just real quick if we could do that. You all have a copy of the zoning map and I know it's a fairly large, I'm sorry, fairly large paper on your desk. And we'll do the best we can here to put it on the screen. We may not be able to get everything, but we'll be able to zoom around in this as needed. Bear with us as the computer tries to play catch-up here. While that's coming up, what I'll say is generally what we did to try to come up with the zoning map, we came up with, and here it comes. The comprehensive plan map, excuse me, the comprehensive plan map organized the county into different character areas, one of them being a rural area, which is a one unit and acre recommended minimum size. The suburban belt, which was a three unit per acre minimum density. And then closer in, you'd get more into the urban areas, urban character areas, which would recommend higher densities. To come up with the boundary between the yellow and the orange that you can see on the map on the, on your table and also on the screen, is we pretty much used the future land use map that was adopted by the planning commission back in April. Now, if there was an easy part to the coming up with the map, I guess that was it, even though that really wasn't easy in and of itself. The more time-consuming aspect of it came by looking at all the different commercial and industrial type uses that are currently in existence in the county and trying to figure out how best they fit within the new document and the new zoning classifications that we came up with. Basically what we tried to do was find the zone which would allow the use, but would be the most restrictive way of doing it. So if something was permitted, let's use the three commercial zones. If something was permitted in the commercial neighborhood zone, which is the most restrictive of the commercial zones, we use that one as opposed to, say, commercial services or commercial general. We tried to, we tried to do that. Now, there are situations in the county, I will say, that there were some uses that were out that we just, we couldn't avoid creating some non-conformities with this. Basically, uses that still aren't gonna fit within the zoning classifications. And that goes for all the different uses that you see on here. Again, that we tried to do our best, but it was really unavoidable. Something like this, you're gonna run into those kind of situations. So that's just kind of some of the ground rules we used coming up with the zoning. Now, tonight, you know, there's quite a few people here. I know there's a lot of people that want to make comments on this. Basically what your role is at this point is to have a public hearing on both the document and the map, take the comments. After that, after the comments are heard, I mean, your options are, you can ask us to, you know, take everything under advisement and then we can kind of review the comments we had and report back, or you can make a recommendation either up or down to the board of commissioners. Regardless of the outcome tonight, there will have to be at least one other public hearing on this and that'll have to be at the board of commissioners level. If it does, if you do want to come back here, you know, it would probably be, I imagine it'd probably be a staff report at one point. You may want to have another public hearing. That's something we can certainly do. But again, regardless of the outcome, this will still have to have a public hearing at the board of commissioners, because at this point, all you are is a recommending body. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any commissioners have questions? Public hearing? Any questions? Dale, any comments? Okay. We're gonna open this up to a public hearing. Now, we're gonna ask everyone to be fair to their neighbor and hold your comments to around three minutes. But we have Mr. Robertson, that he's already talked with Doug, and we're gonna give him a little more length of time because he has a presentation he has to make and I'd like to make someone suspend a rule so we can do that. Second, all right, the motion's A.I. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Okay, sir, would you like to come forward and make your presentation? Appreciate you giving me the time to speak and represent a group called Concerned Citizens for Property Rights. I've got a limited amount of time, so I'm gonna zoom through this. We have to find out, number one, how does the Nashville MPO influence the county comprehensive plan? The MPO is the Metropolitan Planning Organization out of Nashville. It's made up of a board of 21 city and town, excuse me, city, 21 city and county mayors and a couple other people, the governors on this board. It's made up of a five county area, including Rutherford County. It also has the technical coordinating committee, which also has a lot of administrators, planning engineers, et cetera, from these same counties. And 20, and last year, these mayors adopted the regional transportation plan called the 2035 Transportation Plan. And that's no coincidence, our comprehensive plan has that same timeline. So they were planning for the next 25 years of growth. Our mayor was at the chair of the MPO at that time. And I would probably have an issue with the comprehensive plan if it was about building roads and bridges and things of that nature, but as you can see, they have some, a scope of mission that seems to go outside what normal planning would do, would cover when you talk about livability, prosperity, sustainability and diversity. And so when we look at our, our plan that Parsons Brinkerhoff helped us put together at the cost, by the way, of $249,435, they came out with a vision, Rutherford County seeks sustainable growth. And I had two long conversations with Doug Demossi, and I think you can attest, Doug, I asked a lot of questions, didn't I? Quite a bit. One of the questions I asked is, well, what is sustainable growth? What's the definition? And Doug, you laughed and said, well, if you ask 10 different planners, you'd get 10 different answers. And he is spot on. When I did my research, I had a very difficult time coming up with what is sustainability? There was many shades of sustainability. Now, when I pressed Doug for a definition, he said if you're looking for, if you're looking for the definition of sustainable growth in the plan, well, it's not in there, it's not listed there. It's a buzzword that planners use, kind of like smart growth. So my question is, if this is, and David Halfley from Parsons Brinkerhoff stood before this body and said that sustainable growth is one of the most important aspects of our plan, is it not? My question is, which definition are we using? It's not in the plan and when you start thinking about, well, you start dictating sustainability ideas and we don't have a definition even in the plan of what it is, then what are we gonna do when we come before the planning commission and they start citing sustainability? Anyway, Carl Dean is the current chair, the mayor Anderson out of Williamson County is the vice chair, and the mayor is still on the board as the immediate past chair of the MPO. The MPO is, every county in Tennessee is, belongs to some sort of MPO, either a metropolitan, a rural or a transportation planning organization. And they get their authority, it's federally designated by the federal government to be able to plan, in this case for us, 2,800 square miles, 1.5 million people from all these different counties and a couple of cities in those other two counties. They get their funding directly from federal government, so they have the authority to plan, prioritize and select transportation projects. So this is the MPO in Nashville, this is not Rutherford County. We get one vote on that panel of 24 people, spending a lot of money from the federal government. The federal government has designs on what they want to do. And so my question is, how does our plan fit in with the plan from, from the MPO? This is the map of the five counties. One of the things that came out of the MPO is they conducted and commissioned a bicycle and pedestrian study. As you can see, they recommended building 1,127 miles of bike path and greenways throughout those five counties. It says here, a large number of communities through their zoning and subdivision regulations require sidewalk and bikeway in these different developments. I don't think we require it yet until they vote on this plan. According to this, this particular study, cost for this bicycle, these 1,127 miles far exceed available resources. If you want to get an idea of how much it's gonna cost, according to this plan, nearly $800 million to build those 1,100 miles of bike path and greenways. That's a lot of money. Maybe we should start calling them goldways. This looks like a major road map of Rutherford County, but when you take a closer look, that's a proposed bicycle facility, it's a proposed bicycle network. So all those blue lines up here go all the way to the county line. There's eight different arteries going to the entire length of the county, plus this long one here, plus all the red ones here are also bicycle paths, probably in the cities. Those are, it's about 200 miles from what I can come up with of estimated bike paths and trails and pedestrian trails in our, our county. And one of our objectives, one of our goals in the, in the plan is to make sure there's non-motorized transportation routes in all parts of the county. Potential locations identified in the Nashville area metro planning organization's bicycle and pedestrian study. So there, again, they're making these recommendations to us. And one of our goals is, out of 10 different goals, one of them is to provide neighborhoods that create a sense of community and connectedness. How would you do that? Well, you require non-motorized connections, biking and walking in new developments. You develop county-wide greenway systems and integrate it to the existing greenway systems. So you might ask yourself, well, how can a bike path validate my property rights? That doesn't seem like a big deal. I want you to meet Dave McCurry. Dave built this house about 27 years ago by hand and Dave's family knows about eminent domain. In 1964, his dad lost his house to TVA when they flooded. They didn't actually flood his property, they flooded part of it. They left the house in five acres. He asked to keep that and they said, no, now a judge lives in his house. He went down the road with the money he got from them and built another house and then the interstate came through and took his house. So I understand when we have to build dams and we have to build interstates. But when Dave went to, out in the county and bought that property from, next to the Stones River, he had his dad come in and, because he was concerned. He said, Dad, you think you're gonna flood the Stones River and take my house someday? He goes, no, son, but they might widen the road up here. Well, I got 150 feet from the road, I'm not worried about that. He didn't probably realize they were coming through his backyard and he's losing his home right now to eminent domain, to the city of Murfreesboro for a greenway. I have one question, though. Don't you live out in the county? Would you please stand up for me? There's Dave McCurry right there, he came in to put a face with this issue. Dave is losing his house to the city of Murfreesboro, but he lives in the county. Now, how can that happen? Well, because of the MPO. The MPO puts out federal funds and when they do a, a greenway system, they get federal funds, evidently they get to borrow the federal government's power to go outside their jurisdiction and implement eminent domain. So the questions are, how much will this cost, cost the average home buyer if we put all these new bike paths in? How many will lose their land or access if we build 200 miles of bike paths? And how will the county pay for this? Or really, how will we as taxpayers? Or really, how will we, as taxpayers, afford this? Moving on to another subject, your home and a yard versus high-density mixed-use livable, walkable communities. We see this in the plan several different places. Right now, as Doug mentioned, we can build three houses per acre typically on almost any part of the county. But with the new suburban belt, we're stepping that down to one house per unit, and most of the unincorporated rural areas. One of the reasons is cited is land use distribution under the base case scenario continues current patterns of unmanaged low-density sprawl-type development. Well, if we're going from three units per acre down to one unit per acre, isn't that even less dense? And this says that low-density sprawl is the problem. It's not about sprawl, I don't think, because I don't know about you, but I don't consider my home and a yard sprawl. That's where I live, and I enjoy living there. But at the map, as you can see, basically, this area, that's Laverne, Smyrna, Murfreesboro, this area will continue to be three to one. These areas will be reduced down to one to one, except, and this is a different way to look at the map, this is basically a red line district that says, okay, this area out here will be reduced three to one. If you notice, though, got away from me here. If you'll notice, it also says compact development in centers and urban fringe areas. Well, the urban fringe area is this area around the city that's still within the county, but see these little circles here? Those are the character areas and centers that Doug mentioned, and if you wanna know which ones they are, Walter Hill, Eagleville, Last Casses, Rockville, Christiana, all of these small rural areas that, you know, have that hometown feel that we wanna maintain, what they're gonna actually let them do is build even more than three units per acre. I understand that sometimes they can build up to 10 units per acre in these little centers. They're gonna concentrate the population in those centers. Ten rural centers are recommended to concentrate future development around existing rural communities throughout the county as nodes. It says here, the past zoning policies have created expectations for many as to the economic potential of their properties and the right to develop land. One of the questions I have that bothers me is why is "right" in quotation marks, and what context does it mean? If you look here, property owner A and B, let's say they both have 100 acres, property owner, and right now, they can both build three units per acre, let's say 300 houses. Well, right now, the marketplace is gonna determine whether the, maybe the developer approaches owner B because he's closer to Jefferson Park, it's more convenient, who knows? Maybe he doesn't wanna develop his land, that's his business, but right now, they're on equal footing. But for the sake of right, of drawing an arbitrary line on a map, now property B owner can only build 100 homes compared to his neighbor who could build 300, roughly. What is that gonna do to that guy's property, property owner B? I can tell if I was a developer, I wouldn't be looking at it, and you can't blame the pro, you can't blame the developer. But that's an arbitrary line on the map, I mean, why didn't they draw the, that line right across there? And then even if they did, what happens to the guy next to him? I think it's gonna have a huge negative impact on property values, 'cause a lot of farmers, that's what they do, when they get to the end of the line, they wanna hang it up, and maybe they wanna retire, and they wanna sell or develop their property. Maybe they wanna save their farm from going into bankruptcy, because maybe times are tough like it is right now, maybe gas or oil goes up and they run their property on diesel and petrochemicals and fertilizer, et cetera. Maybe they wanna carve off 30 acres and build a, a small subdivision to save the family farm. Well, if they're limited to one house per acre, again, a developer's not gonna develop the land just because you're losing your farm. Rutherford County has a long history of supporting private property rights, but is now concerned with the potential rights of future generations to a well-planned prosperous county. I can't even process that sentence. Now, I have to worry about some imaginary, nonexistent person in the future that is gonna come in and challenge me on my property rights for, what, for what? What does that mean? That sounds like muddled reasoning to me. Is there a legal implication for the county for drawing an arbitrary line on a map causing the owner's property value to be decimated? I posed this to a constitutional attorney recently, and he's practiced in front of the U.S. Supreme Court several times, he's very good. His bailiwick is individual property rights, and he's very interested in this subject. He's researching it now, 'cause he thinks it has merit, that there might be some issue that could come back to haunt the county legally. Rural centers are created based on existing and likely development. These centers would have the majority of new development located in a more compact design, encouraging walkability. The comprehensive plan supports the creation of centers to concentrate future growth, leading to a density of population. What does that mean? That means lots of people living closer together, stat impact. And land uses that makes greenway development feasible, again, those expensive greenways that we've noticed earlier. I think the real reason that this is an issue is that the Metropolitan Planning Organization out of Nashville has designs of putting in a commuter rail system. And if you're gonna put in a commuter rail system and have a bold new vision, and you're gonna have rapid bus lines and feeder lines and rural bus routes, you have to get people to live close together and close to the bus stops, that can have a livable, walkable to the bus stop and the train station type community, like many New Yorks in every little rural area. I really think it's gonna change the complexion for you people that live in Last Casses and Milton and some of those other areas. Again, if you're gonna, if you're gonna focus on these little areas here and, and herd people into those areas for the sake of bus routes and, and for maybe a commuter rail line in the future, whose plan are we working on? This is what it says from our plan, let's participate in efforts to evaluate commuter rail between the county and downtown Nashville. It would probably be nice to do that, but one of my buddies pointed out, he goes, man, I kinda wish they would get a train, 'cause that means somebody else might ride it, and I would have more time on, I would have less time on the interstate. Well, probably everybody thinks similar that way. Somebody else is gonna ride the train and free up the interstate for me. The market forces may not support a, a transportation-oriented development at the present, allowing continued scattered growth development that may not place Rutherford County in the strongest position to demonstrate the need for commuter rail. Who are they demonstrating this to? The Department of Transportation and, and, and Washington. 'Cause we're having to demonstrate to them that we've got the kind of geographic, compact, high-density population concentrated in areas that would make it look good to have some kind of mass transit system. The center's concept proposing this comprehensive plan lends itself very well to concentrated populations that could make rural bus routes feasible. But then, they also actually admit the challenge, which is achieving the sufficient concentration of population. Maybe there is a reason why they won't be able to achieve it, 'cause I don't think most people wanna live in a stacked, impact-type development, I think most people want a home and a yard. Centers are compact, mixed-use, walkable areas, and we're gonna use them to, nodes to attract and organize future growth and livable, less auto-dependent. I mean, I don't know about you, but I kinda like cars. Now, this is from the bicycle and pedestrian study, they had a challenge that they came up with, with land use and land use patterns. Currently, the region has a lack of mixed-use development and concentrations of development activity that make walking and bicycling more realistic options for replacing days automobile trips. So far, I've never seen a pack of businesspeople on bikes on Memorial abroad with their briefcases going in to work in the morning. If that really was a bunch of them doing that, maybe we could justify having a bike path for them. But I don't think anybody wants to go out there right now when it's, you know, sub-freezing temperature and ride your bike to work. How does the comprehensive plan affect land use in the free market, or will the new zoning regulations impede individual property rights? Well, this is from the future. Rutherford County has also moved decisively in providing transportation options and encouraging sustainable development, that is that key word. The county provides incentives to sustainable building practices, again, that key word, and this is looking out 2035 and looking back and saying, this is the things that we did. We've written in water conservation measures into the building code and subdivision regulations. I don't wanna even address the water issues tonight. This is a way to make us competitive in business community. Let's require additional landscaping and additional urban design amenities. If I'm a business owner and you're gonna require more stuff, it's not gonna make me more competitive, it's gonna make me look somewhere else. Rural and open landscapes should be entreated upon minimally. By establishing these character areas, Rutherford will have a guide to those places that should be entreated upon minimally. By who and from whom? I thought that's what no trespassing signs were for. It, it really means that you, as a farmer or a landowner in a rural area, is intruding on somebody else's ability to have a view shed to be, not be diminished, or your landscape and, and, and your experience on your entryway. And then we also, just go ahead and say it outright, if we can't purchase the land for some of these projects, we're gonna just take property under eminent domain like Mr. McCurry. We are also gonna develop guidelines to protect hillsides and ridge tops, streams, slopes, and trees, I'm not against any of those things, but I just went to a Christmas party at a friend's house that has a house up on the top of a hill with a great view. I'm, I'm betting that if these issues right here were in the plan, she wouldn't have been able to build that house there. Now, this is something new, and this is from, directly from this zoning draft, that I'm not sure if this is requirement, if this is an option, but a conservation subdivision is probably an option right now, but it may not be forever. But it's how you have 100 acres to develop, a conservation easement would basically say 50% of that, 50 acres of that would have to be put in open space, shall be designated as open space. On track here. And you would have to also subtract from the other 50% what your net billable areas, don't you have, always have to do this, you have to take away right-of-ways and wastewater and easements and ponds and lakes and streams, but here's something new, all-in are located on slopes of in excess of 20%. It might not sound like a big deal, but 20% is not that, not that great. In fact, if you look at the National Association of Home Builders, their national green standards indicate that a nationwide standard be at 25% or greater. So we're actually 5% more restrictive in our town, in our community, than the national green standard is. That's a bit alarming. As far as the ownership of this open space, if you take 300 homes on 100 acres and put, and move them to the 50 acres, they're gonna let them have more density, is what I understand, the other 50 acres gonna be left in open land. That open land has to be owned by someone, and it has to have a permanent easement, meaning it can never be built on in perpetuity. The only two entities can own that 50% for open space is the Rutherford County Planning and Engineering Department, or a legal, legally established land trust, like the Sierra Club, a nonprofit. Problem is, though, just because they own it, doesn't mean that you're off the hook, because it says ownership of the underlying fees can, can either can be from the land trust or the homeowners association. I have a feeling that you'll, you as a homeowner will pick up the tab for the maintenance on that other 50% of that property, on top of your normal HOA fees. This, this might be a good idea, I don't know. All I know is that after, after really investigating this issue, I see way more questions in this comprehensive plan than I see answers, and I think there's a lot of other people that would like for the county to do a better job at marketing this plan to the general population. As far as I can tell, there's probably been less than, if you take out the steering committee, the planning committee, and the commissioners, and the stakeholders, stakeholders are people who are, you know, they have a stake in this plan, like the bicycle, the Bicycle Club of Murfreesboro, I'm sure they love the idea of 200 miles of bike paths. But if you take all those folks out, I bet there's been less than 300 citizens like me that have no stake in it, that were part of making the decision for this plan. This is another area where we get into more restrictions, is specific corridor management plans for corridors, district overlays, and this would, we have to use these to balance the visual and scenic appeal with the development rights of the current property owners. Again, I hear this, I hear property owners having to give up some of their property rights for the good of the, the greater good of the community. Overlay's can be developed through zoning regulations that identify boundaries, that spell out a relationship between the corridor, visual and scenic goals, and the benefits to landowners. Regulations should enforce these boundaries and provide both incentives and requirements to, of the, for the creation of gateways into communities. And this is one of the issues, minimize sprawl adjacent to rural communities that effectively diminishes their intactness and their entryway experience. I don't know what diminishing your entryway experience is, except for maybe when you're driving from a, a less dense population into one of these rural centers, one of these nodes, that it might diminish your entryway experience if somebody decides to develop that land. They're gonna develop district overlays, and this is a pilot program for Highway 99, for a gateway corridor, developed through a specific corridor management plan. A corridor overlay should be developed that brings together access management. I don't know what access management means. Does that mean I have less access on my land if I happen to be in that overlay? An overlay is a template that they'll lay on the map and say, in this area, we gotta have extra restrictions to protect that entryway experience. Careful selection of building setbacks and careful selection of building uses. Signage standards, right-of-way mobility options into one single development scenario, which again, is a template that you can lay on the map. Merging protections of view sheds with the larger land preservation process, I don't, I didn't, I never heard the term "view shed" until I read this plan. I've heard of watersheds, but your view shed is you driving down the road and being able to see those cows out in the field with a big round bale of hay, and some silos in a barn, and it looks nice, and so you need to protect that view shed. Well, who are we protecting? It seems like we're giving people that are passing by more control of the land than the farmer or the landowner or the homeowner. And I'm on the last stretch here, Craig. Are there challenges to this, in this plan? Well, yes, the plan actually spells out the challenges that this plan has. In fact, every, there's 10 major goals, and each goal has several objectives below it, and then each objective had some strategies, and with each strategy, they said, but yeah, but there's some challenges. And here's what we figure that we're gonna come up against if we try to do this. This is from the plan. Landowner resistance to any restriction on, on development rights. Balance and legal issues relating to property rights with environmental protection. Property rights of individual families that want to develop in areas where no development exists yet. And not all landowners in a given area slated for development wish to do so when the opportunity's presented. Now, in California, what they do is they just go ahead and take your private land and give it to another private person, 'cause they can develop it and make more tax revenue. I hope that's not what's coming here, but the next part of that is, do landowners or developers in an area slated for more rural community character choose to forego development rights and economic returns to support those uses being located elsewhere? Well, if they're located elsewhere, then I can't benefit from it, really, if I'm a landowner. Landowner willingness to forego development revenue in exchange for tax benefits. I think most people would agree they choose cash over tax credits, generally. Challenges, acceptance by the development community of increased costs associated with development, so they are admitting there's gonna be increased costs for the developers. Potential difficulty in precisely estimating the real costs associated with the development. That means that a developer may decide to pass altogether, 'cause they can't even put their hand on how much it's gonna cost. Possibility that increased impact fees will make home ownership less affordable for moderate-income Land dedicated to right-of-way is land that cannot be included in development calculations and is therefore costly to developers and landowners. These are the setbacks and the, and the district overlays and the bike paths and the greenways that has to come from somebody's land. Sidewalk, bicycle, pedestrian pathways add to development costs and can receive resistance from the development, development community. Not from the, just from the development community, 'cause the reason they're gonna resist is because they realize, I'm not gonna be able to sell my houses as, less expensive as I used to be. And maybe people won't buy the houses, so it's much more risk. It may cramp our housing market here in Rutherford County. Excuse me?
She'll have a chance to speak in a minute.
So we should just go ahead and take those people's rights away?
Yeah, she'll have a chance to speak.
Okay, you can speak when you, when you get a chance there. Resetting the, the square footage down from, basically, this is resetting three units per acre down to one unit per acre is gonna cause an issue. One of the things that I look for is, is this, changing this plan, is this gonna be cost-effective, you know, is it gonna be, make our county more efficient in our planning? Is it gonna make it more smoother and make things, you know, improve quality of life? I would think that if we were gonna do something like this, it would save money, right? That's what I thought. That's what I thought. I thought, well, surely they're going, that's going to be the way they're going to be able to hang their hat on this, is we're going to be able to save a lot of money if we change these zoning ideas. But this is what it says in the plan, and Parsons Brinkerhoff is the ones who did the research on this. The point is that the vast majority of county expenditures provide services countywide. The scenarios, we had three scenarios. We had the base case, do nothing scenario, do, keep doing what we've been doing. We had the suburban belt and then the urban infill. We chose the suburban belt. But this scenario, the scenarios under consideration will have no effect on these expenditures. Major expenditure categories that will change little across scenarios include law enforcement, social services, courts, and schools, for the most part. In other words, what is the physical impact of more diffuse, less concentrated growth in rural areas like we have now versus compared with more dense growth? High concentration of population? The answer is that the impact on the overall county budget will be minimal. So if it's going to be minimal, if it's not going to save us money, why are we doing this? What is the real problem that we're solving with a comprehensive plan? I cannot get that question answered. I've asked Doug that many times. I've asked a few commissioners, a few other people. I can't get a clear, concise, this is a big problem that we're going to have if we don't do this. The way I see it is, also based on this report, is that we are assuming the same growth, no matter what scenario we choose. We're going to have the same number of people moving in, if they're correct. So if they're correct, we're going to have the same number of people. It's not about what's better, what's the best way to plan, it's about how can we herd those people to different areas, versus let them build a home and a, and a yard wherever the market dictates now. And I think most developers start in the center and work their way out. And that is, that is an overreaching question that we have, that I really think we have to answer. Through the extensive public engagement process, many of the citizens of Rutherford County expressed the desire to see the remaining rural landscapes of the county preserved. I, I feel your pain, man. At the same time, that's my land. And whether you should have the right to tell me how I should do, do something with my land based on it's, it's diminishing your view shed and your entryway experience, is violates everything that we stand for as Americans when we talk about our constitutional rights. Land ownership is paramount to having freedom, and we're having our freedom stripped from us a little bit at a time. And I just think that this plan was not well thought out, or maybe what happened was, is we were led down a path by a consultant that we paid a lot of money, and we felt like we had to do something. I think we need to back up and take a stronger look, because I think there's enough people here that probably feel like I do, that we need to have more time to look at this thing. We've had two years, there's nothing, we're talking about 25-year plan. If it's a 24 and a half year plan, or even a 24-year plan, I don't think we're going to fall apart if we take another six months or a year to really dig in. I just don't think the marketing was done on the front end by the county for enough of the people, there's, out of 249,000 people, I'm, I'm betting less than 300 people had a say in this thing. So my final questions are this, if it costs the same, just what is the burning problem that we're solving? Why do we need to herd people and concentrate the population? And really, is our plan, is this our plan? That David Halfley from Parsons Brinkerhoff stood up and said, this is not our plan, this is not their staff's plan, this is what the steering committee and the people want. But I can guarantee you, when you look at their first findings, before they ever did a survey or talked to a stakeholder, all of this bike path stuff and complete streets and open space conservation was all in their proposal before they ever asked a single person what they felt. I'm, I'm believing that this is part of the NPO, Nashville's Regional Transportation Plan, where federal government gives those mayors lots of money to spend and let them choose where to spend, and it's really easy to spend somebody else's money. And it's real easy to say, wow, it'd be nice if we all rode bicycles instead of being so dependent on automobiles. That's, that's nice, that's a, that's a nice theory. But in real practice, I don't think people are going to go for that. I'm going to ask the, by the way, if you want to keep track of this, you can text PLAN to that 697-9977. You'll be added to a text alert list, we'll update you on some of the things, you might want to take that number down. But I would ask the, and I think, and I'm sorry to be surly and to be aggressive, but I, I feel like I'm, I'm convicted on this subject. I feel like that, and I don't feel, I think, and I believe, that this should be postponed indefinitely, and we should maybe come back and have another conversation with the public, even more involved. And if you really believe this is a great plan, then let's tell everybody in, in, in Rutherford County, and let, get, and get way more people involved and let them find out about this plan and then zoning rules that will help enforce this plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Jay, 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 Jay. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Robinson? Questions? Let's see if anybody had any.
Yes, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to hear them. From the committee?
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now, everyone else wish to speak, if we can hold it around three minutes, that would be, that would be mighty considerate of you.
My name's Howard Wall, and I've been in rural state business for the last 30 years as a broker and, and broker and developer, and still standing, and we will all tend to continue. Mr. Mayor here, but commissioners and planning commissioners, currently when groups of people and businesses owners need to build or significantly modify their projects, the planning commission requires almost all groups, by intensive engineering details, as to what is going to be built, where it's going to be built, and providing strict notification on all surrounding property owners prior to public approval. This policy has served Rutherford County very well through the years, I've noticed, when followed in a manner that demonstrates equal employment under the law. Tonight, I'd like to speak to the four corridors that are proposed in the comprehensive plan. Each of the urban corridor, urban corridor, blue way, and the rural scenic corridor. Engineering level detail is not available, but the entire length of these corridors are somewhere between 60 and 110 miles. Due to the varying local character among the proposed corridors, it is estimated that between 1,000, 500, and 5,000 of our neighbors and property owners will be impacted by eminent, eminent domain takings, or some other type of involuntary, voluntary, involuntary.
Mr. Walls, get close to, get him get close to the wall, to the, to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Let me do the whole thing over, not from the start. Engineering level detail is not available, but length estimates for these four corridors range between 60 and 100 miles total. Due to the varying land character among the proposed corridors, it is estimated that between 1,000 and 5,000 property owners will be directly impacted by eminent domain takings or some other type of involuntary land transactions. Did you hear the 1,000 and 5,000? Again, still our folks, even though you couldn't hear me while I go in. When citizens seek planning approval for projects, they are almost always held to a strict standard of engineering level, closer and full prior notification to adjacent stockholders as well, prior to receiving public approval. Tonight, I would like to ask the question of Rutherford County citizens and elected officials. If it's good policy to require detailed engineering plans and stockholder notification when citizens seek planning commission approval, then is it not wise for the planning commission to be held to their own exact standards and procedures, like we are? I personally believe if detailed planning is a good policy for citizens, it also must be a good policy for constructive planning initiated by planning government. For those that do not disagree with the logic that detailed planning is a good thing, we must have it, there are only two options. First, detailed maps of all four corridors must be made to normally accepted county engineering standards, just like other civilians. And then, I lost my place, I sound like Governor Perry there for a second, excuse me. The second, I couldn't do two things, but he can do three. But the second option is to remove the four corridors from the comprehensive plan entirely, until such engineering and legal notification can be adequately accomplished prior to any level of approval. So we've got the first option and the second, and the second option. Corridor system is a huge project with significant unquestionable impacts on a large number of citizens. Massive construction costs, questionable benefits, ongoing operation and maintenance costs for taxpayers in perpetuity. Another long time. I'd call the mayor, county commissioners, and postal level officials to clearly state for the record whether they personally agree or disagree, concept of the planning commission being held to the same exacting standards to which we, business people of Rutherford County are as well held.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Bend that mic down a little bit, I think they're having a tough time hearing upstairs there. Closer to you.
Okay. All right, I'm Darryl Whaley, I live in Milton, and I was raised at Eagleville, and I've been here in this county, I'm 67 years old. I graduated from high school in '62. I love Rutherford County, I love Milton, and I really don't like somebody from Nashville coming out here and telling us what to do, and how we got to drive, and how we got to build. I, I think all you people are smart enough to take care of that. I appreciate the codes, and I appreciate the planning commission here in this county, and our commissioners, and I don't think y'all have to listen to anybody from Nashville. I pastor church in Walton Hill, live in Milton, that's over 15 miles, I don't want to ride a bicycle to church. And, you know, and, you know, we get, you think I'm crazy and, and mixed up and radical and everything else about all of this, but let me tell you something. You know, if you study this thing, like they didn't study the healthcare bill, don't do like Nancy Pelosi, she says, we've got to pass this thing so we can find out what's in it. And I'm just asking y'all to, to do your duty, listen to it, and I want to say that every one of y'all is smart enough to take care of this county without having to listen to somebody else. And the word corridor that Howard talked about, if you listen to Channel 4 News this morning, you heard that word mentioned. They were talking about getting the bus routes out of West Nashville, and they called, it was a certain corridor that this was in. So it's already been implemented, y'all, so, you know, just listen up and keep your ear to the tracks and study this thing, before you do anything else about it. I know you're not going to pass it tonight, but study it and don't be afraid to say no.
All right, thank you, sir. Who's next?
Hello, I'm Nicole Percy, and I live in the Stewart's Creek subdivision. And tonight, I want to take a few minutes and just talk about the potential rezoning of the rock quarry. The rezoning from residential to industrial, and how that would impact our communities and our neighborhoods. You know, these regulations, these rules, they were put into place years ago zoning this residential to protect the homes that were around this area. Why would we think about changing that now, when there are more homes around this area that need to be protected from this type of potential development? You know, I was at home, probably a month ago during the day, a blast was set off that was so violent, it shook my dishes, it shook my windows, it rattled the pictures on the walls. If this is allowed to happen, and we rezone this to industrial, that's only going to allow them to encroach closer, and that's only going to allow these blasts to go off closer to our homes and our neighborhoods. It's going to move it from, what, the buffer 1,500 feet to 200, 250 feet, I think? Amazingly close. You know, and this is, this is opening the door for potential property damage, damage to our foundations, our streets, our sidewalks, our driveways, you know, a lot of potential for damage to these homes. And in some of these neighborhoods, there were $300,000, $400,000 homes in these neighborhoods that are just right down the road from the quarry. And these people, myself included, we're concerned about our property values, but not just that, we're concerned about our neighborhoods. I mean, these are the neighborhoods that we live in, these are our homes. This is not only going to impact our property values, it's going to impact our quality of life, our quality of life at home, the place that we're supposed to be able to go to, be with our families, have peace, have quiet, have comfort from the outside world. You know, and this, this potential rezoning opens up a lot of different things that could come in and that could be put onto this property. Can someone guarantee us there won't be a theme park, a scrapyard, an asphalt plant? Because do you all want to raise your families and your children right down the road from that? I know I don't, and I know my neighbors don't either. So that's why we implore you to think about this, and to think about rezoning this area from residential to industrial. You know, I, I've been at some of these meetings in the past, I've heard people speak on behalf of the rock quarry. I heard one gentleman speak that doesn't even live in Rutherford County, and he spoke on behalf of the quarry. He lives down in Shelbyville. We are the homeowners that live here. We're the homeowners that live in this county, we've bought property, we pay taxes, we take care of our land and we care about it. We're the ones that are imploring you, because we're the ones that see it, hear it, smell it. We live with it every day. We live with it the way that it is now. We surely don't want it to get anywhere. So we ask you to please support us, keep our homes safe, keep our families safe, and don't allow this rezoning to industrial to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Jay Jackson, and I represent a group of homeowners who have been fighting this illegal Blackman Rogers Group rock quarry operation since 2008. As some of you may be aware, there have been two currently pending lawsuits dealing with this Blackman quarry, dealing exactly with the problems that exist out there that since 2008 have still not been addressed. In fact, they had a code, they had a conditional use permit request pending for the planning commission that was passed on to the county commission. And it was at that time that a problem with the existing law was determined as it relates to the setback, which the lady was talking about a little bit, that setback being the 1,500 feet, which is the current law in Rutherford County. The new law, the proposed law, the proposed change would reduce that setback to 200 feet. And just so that everybody is clear, the rear setback for a home in Rutherford County to the rear property line is 20 feet. So a resident could have their home located within 20 feet of their rear property line. That means that the Rogers Group, or any other, or any other quarry operation would then be allowed to engage in quarry operations within 220 feet of that person's back door. 120 feet. That doesn't mean just blasting, that means rock crushers, that means conveyor belts, that means dump trucks. That means dump trucks. That means large amounts of machinery, lots of things that are going to go on. What's most disappointing about the change is that there's actually a proposal to deal with changing this quarry in the first place. In 2009, one of my clients went to the codes enforcement and pointed out that the Rogers Group rock quarry, as it currently sits, is violating the restrictions that are in the plat that was originally submitted when it was approved back in the 1980s. That codes complaint has been sitting and nothing has been acted on it since 2009. There's another lawsuit about that. Yet despite the fact that we haven't done anything about this illegal quarry in this county, we're talking about making changes dealing with it. Another change that wants to be made has to do with this rezoning this to heavy industrial. I think some of you, most of you should have gotten a letter that I received and showed this appendix. I cannot believe all the permitted uses in a heavy industrial zone. It's unbelievable the amount of permitted uses. Adult entertainment is a permitted use in a heavy industrial zone. What you're doing is you're telling Rogers Group and this illegal quarry operation, not only do you get to keep operating your illegal quarry, but now you've got all these other things you can do with it if you want. So it's under this guise and it's under these circumstances that we're talking about even touching or changing anything as it relates to this quarry operation. It's just, to me, utter nonsense. The commission, the planning commission, the county commission, nothing should be touched as it relates to this Rogers Group illegal rock quarry operation until something's done about these lawsuits, till they're moved forward, until they're tried in court, until the county decides that it's not going to cede their authority to enforce codes complaint to Chancellor Corlou. Until they're going to decide, hey, we've got restrictions. I've got them right here for anybody that wants to see them. I've got a copy of the plat. They're right here. The funny thing is, is that this isn't anything the county forced on the Stone Man Quarry. These are the things they put in their own application. And the Rogers Group and nobody ever owning that quarry has ever come back and asked to increase these to a depth of 60 feet. That quarry's deeper than 60 feet, guys. Hours of operation end at 5:00. They're operating long past 5:00. Those conveyors are going almost to midnight at times. Nothing is being done, yet we're talking about opening the Pandora's Box for the Rogers Group and their illegal quarry to do all kinds of other things. We gotta stop this. We gotta jump back and we gotta think about this. And the last thing I want to point out that I really think is a mistake, and that is ceding the authority to approve special uses to a non-elected body in the Board of Zoning Appeals. I am sure that there are times when the county commission members and these members would love not to have to deal with people like me that come up and speak about some of these issues. But in order to ensure proper accountability to the citizens of this county, that power and that authority should remain with the county commission and with this body also. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir. Pull that mic to you there where they can hear you.
Well, my teacher at school told me I never... I didn't have any trouble with anybody hearing me normally. Anyway, my name is Raymond Orman. I live in the Sugar Tree subdivision. So I'll fill the young lady's paint and recognize what the gentleman said before me. Every day, somewhere between 12 and 2 o'clock, the house rattles and shakes. And my biggest fear, I think, is that, you know, I'm very careful about pulling out from Sugar Tree Drive onto Burnton Knob Road, but my biggest fear is one of these big trucks is going to run over me one of these days, and they're increasing in numbers every day. And my purpose here tonight was to object to changing the 1,500-foot setback law ordinance to the 200-foot. Anything that is done over there as far as changing that will just allow them to expand to do, like the gentleman said before me, many, many different things. And I've even heard some scuttlebutt about a dump site filling up the holes they're digging out. So that really scares me, and that's just right behind my property. And I'm not going to use my three minutes so somebody else can have that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Some of you out here know who I am. I've been fighting the quarry now for 20 years, to a certain extent 20 years. Talking about dust, noise. I mean, the dust is terrible. But Mr. Stockard called me this week and interviewed me over the phone. Channel 4 was out there. Mr. Jackson sent him out to the house to see some things. And I have invited people in the past, anyone who wants to come to my house and see what's going on. This young lady's talking about this 200 feet. Yeah, I brought it up, 200 feet. I can throw a rock from my back door or my porch to the property line, and from that property line, I can throw a rock up into the pond over there at the quarry. And I've been keeping track of it now, like I say, since 2005. When I'm at home, I mark it down on my calendar when the blast occurred. They used to be a little bit before 12 o'clock every day. Now it's gone into the evenings. It's in the mornings at times, sometimes it's in the evening. It's gone to at 4:50, about 4:50 in the evenings, they said, blast offed. Like the young lady said, it rattles your windows, dishes, your doors. I've got a log house. If I didn't have a log house, it'd be cracked all over. I just grant you on that. And these calendars here, I keep track of it. They're from 2005 to 2011. Every time I hear a blast go off, I put the time down and keep track of it. And I did send it into the state several years ago, and they run a check with the quarry's blasting and my calendars, and it's right on the money. I did not alleviate from anything. And another thing, I've got a layout of the quarry when it first begun, and it was in And of course, y'all can't see it. I need to have it up on the board. But the camera from Channel 4, they... He panned around showing it, and I showed him exactly from where we were standing, there was conveyors. You can see the conveyors from my house that runs, bringing the rock out. When I first moved out there, they had one conveyor in one pond. They got three conveyors and about four ponds out there now. And back a year ago, my wife was out there walking around one Sunday, and she come to me and told me, "Have you seen where they've been grading back there?" They have graded off a spot. Now, I brought this up in our last meetings before. And when I brought it up, they didn't do anything else to it for a while, but I don't know what they were going to do back there. They just grade, push down trees, and cleaned out a big spot, twice as big as this room. And my wife come to me the other day, and she'd been walking around and said, "They got a fence up around that." So I went back there and walked the line, and it joins my neighbor's property. Don't join my property, but my property joins the quarry property. I can stand there with one foot on their property and the other foot on the other property. And they go in there and do whatever they want to do, and I don't think the planning commission knows anything about it or anybody else far that goes. But on this plat here, it tells you, when it was put in, the deepest they had to go is 60 feet. They're 380 feet, I know, at the present time on my end of the quarry. Now, that's a pretty good size difference. And this thing has changed hands three times, Hinson, Stone Man, and the Rogers Group. And I don't know how they work it out. They probably leave it up to them to do whatever they want to do, and nobody's doing anything about it, stopping them. And I'm on a well. I cannot get city water. The county will not run city water over that hill. There's two houses up there, mine and my sister-in-law's next door to me. My biggest concern in the past has been them blasting over, ruining my well. And I tell you what, if they ruin my well, excuse me, they're going to be having some more problems besides what they've got going now. But there's one thing on this plat where I was talking about they cleared off, and I brought it up in the meeting last time, and nothing was ever carried on about it. There's a cemetery. There was a cemetery lot up there. I don't know who it belonged to, whether it was an old family plot, but where they dug out up there and put... Now, I'm talking about ponds. They had one pond when they started, when I moved out there. There's four out there now. And that spot that they cleared off, that's where had to be where that cemetery is. And nothing was ever said about that. But if you or I was going to build a house on a lot somewhere and run up on a cemetery lot, they'd put a stop to you building it. They'd put a stop to me building it. I've had it. I've heard it. I've had it happening with builders doing that in Williamson County. Just happened to hit an old area that belonged to the Indians years ago. They uncovered that by grading the lots for building houses. They put a stop to them for a certain period of time, and they had to do something about those lots. But I hadn't heard anything on what's happened to this cemetery over there at Rogers Group. But it's just, it's ridiculous. And what Mr. Robinson brought up, I was at that presentation last week. He did a fabulous job on that. And I tell you, where it's going with our government and you people or the government of Rutherford County, it's going socialistic to me. They're going to do whatever they want to do, and when they... If they pass that, then they've got you. They're going to do whatever they want to with your property, and you can't do a thing about it. And you probably read it in this week's paper. Sam Stark put it in there. He called me and interviewed me on the phone, and I told him the exact thing, but he didn't print the socialism part and put it in the paper. But I'll tell you all, that's the way it's going if it keeps going like this, and our people here have got to do something about it. Now, this young lady was speaking a while ago. Anybody else if you ever want to come up there? I live on the knob. When you pass the quarry entrance, you pass my drive, when you start down the hill. When you come up the hill from the west side and start down the hill, you've passed my drive. I am right on the knob, and anyone who wants to come up there and see what's going on, you're welcome to come, and I'd be glad to show it to you because this is all ridiculous, and it's... Y'all people got to put a stop to it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Got one question, sir. Sir, got one question.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
Wow. How can I follow that? I can talk on the rock quarry all night, but I'm not going to. My name is Avant Lane. I live at 221 North Highland in Murfreesboro, by where the old hospital used to be, real close to that. When I first looked at the zoning resolution, the new one, I perused it trying to see how it affected me. We're all worried about how's it going to affect me and mine. It's human nature. But what Mr. Sullivan and the folks about the rock quarry are talking about are things that need to be addressed better in the new comprehensive plan, I think. But let me, since we've been talking about that, let me read out of the new zoning resolution about resource productions and extractions, rock quarries. This is a quote. "Resource production and extraction type operations..." Well, this is the old 1984 resolution. This is the law as it is now. "Resource production and extraction type operations shall not be located closer than one mile to a school." Haven't talked about that. "To any school site, it shall shed back at least 1,500 feet, the excavation area if applicable, from public right-of-ways, churches, and all residentially zoned property, including residential portions of approved planned developments." And then it goes on to talk about different paragraphs of things in it. Now, here's... We're supposed to be talking about the new zoning resolution. That's what this meeting is about, a presentation. Now, here's what the new zoning resolution says. It's directly copied from the final draft of the new resolution on section 14, page 23, and all you folks have a copy of this that I gave you a handout. Number two, setbacks. "No excavation quarry wall or storage area shall be located within 200 feet of any property line. Building constructed as part of the operations shall not be located within 100 feet of any property line." That's a big, big difference from 1,500 foot down to 200 foot. And also, where's the protection about the one mile from the school? It's not in there. Not in the... I couldn't find it in the whole 176-page document. I couldn't find it. That being said, I've reviewed this new document somewhat and concluded that it has been a tremendous effort and thought have gone into it. There's a lot of great things about it, but it's got hairs, just like the old document. 1984 resolution's got some hairs. But from what I've just talked about, that shows there's a glaring inconsistency between the documents. And those two quotes are just two things. Now, I... It leads me to believe that some of the prior legislation and years of work done by the Board of Commissioners, Planning Committee, are going to be nullified by consultants and bureaucrats. I believe this really needs to be addressed. And Sean, by what I've discovered, there may be more inconsistencies in the document. That's from what I have found concerning my particular situation. Now, the 1984 document is not necessarily a bad one. Years of work and struggle have evolved it into a base to work from. The problem I have, with all due respect to the parties, everybody involved here, there's a way to... There's a process to fix this, and I think it's really important that the border commissioners, the commissioners that do the voting have the tools to be able to make decisions about this new zoning resolution. The process would be a relatively simple one. Changes from an earlier draft are not what is critical. Changes from an earlier draft are not what is critical. I kept seeing italics written in blue. Oh, that's the earlier draft. Well, I don't care about the earlier draft. I want to see the final draft. That's what's here. But the additions or deletions from the old resolution, or changes, that's what's important. What's been changed, what the additions are, or what the deletions are. A listing of numbers and letters amendments on a page by itself with all these amendments and letters, that means nothing to me. I'd have to spend hours and hours, you know, piecing it up. Well, here's what I'm talking about, is doing a comparative analysis between the two documents. Planning could take the old documents, section by section, paragraph by paragraph, or sentence by sentence, if necessary, and show the old one on one side of the page and the new changes, additions, or deletions on the opposite side of the page. I feel quite strongly that the commissioners would be well-served by this working document, that they'd have something there that they know what they're looking at. Because they have to execute this. They have to say yea or nay on it. But in conclusion, and I'll get off this podium, I feel it's imperative that our elected officials get the tools and information they need to make the decisions that affect our day-to-day life. Everybody in this county, everybody in this county, needs to pay close attention to what is going on here, whether you agree, disagree, or whatever, because the decisions are going to be made over the next year, however long this takes, are going to affect our day-to-day life the way we do business. Responsibility of this decision falls to the elected, not to the consultant, not to the bureaucrat. In my opinion, there are too many laws and regulations in our society that have come into being unintentionally or intentionally because of the bureaucratic machinery. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Who wants to speak next?
I'm Sally Wall. I'm 72 years old, and I'm the same age as Ernest, who I noticed left. We couldn't have a Bible park, but we could have a mosque. I was about 18 when they started the Percy Priest acquisition of the land and what they had to do to do Percy Priest Lake. All of the elderly couples that lived along there died before they ever got the lake. They were so upset with eminent domain. And may I ask you, where are you? I was born on 1,300 acres, and I cannot believe that every right we have got has been taken away from us except with the action of this next thing. People are already moving out of the country to beat the band, and I am not going to move. But I can't... Three of y'all told me that you wished you hadn't voted for the... Now, are you going to vote for this and wish you hadn't voted for the... I just... It's just... It's ridiculous. The man is right. It is ridiculous. We've got enough problems without starting some more. We've got foreclosed properties that we can't sell. We've got so much to do before we start this, and I don't know that this will ever need to be started as far as it being the best thing to do for this county. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have new information? You look like new information. You look like new information.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Rick Cantrell. I currently live in Rutherford County, and I have a small business that does HOA management and land development. I have some general comments regarding the proposed ordinance and map, followed by some specific bullet points about the ordinance. Only recently have I paid too much attention to the development of this product, and only after colleagues in the field of land development began saying, making comments about it, have I paid attention to it and what's going on. I was actually a city planner at one time and wrote Murfreesboro's 1984 ordinance. We rezoned the whole town with that. I drafted that ordinance about after the city of Memphis. Several public hearings, not just one, but several at both the planning commission level and the legislative level, to adopt both that ordinance and the map. Today, that ordinance has gone through several finer changes, some major changes, some zoning ordinances, but the base zoning ordinance still exists today. The map that we proposed attempted to keep everyone's same property rights intact that they had prior to the rezoning. I think we were very successful at doing that at that time. It was a very long process to do, and the goal was to do that. When I left the city of Murfreesboro, I then got into land development and had been working in land development, built subdivisions throughout Middle Tennessee, probably built over 3,000 lots in the whole county area in the past 15 years. So I come to you speaking from both the perspective of a city planner and as a land development person. When I was looking at the new map that we have now, and I went back and looked at the old map, two things jumped out at me just immediately. And one is that we increased the size of the heavy industrial zoning classification on, I think, three quarry sites. One on Hickory Ridge Road, one on Bartonob Road, and then one down on 231 South. Second thing I noted was that we had decreased the density for about half of the unincorporated area in Rutherford County. And we created a new classification called RL. RL, as you know, is a one unit per acre. The RM is pretty much close, as Mr. Demossi said earlier, to the R15 classification in place for several years. This vast amount of property has been proposed for RL at one unit per acre. And the comprehensive plan in that references, and I paraphrase, that the intent of the comprehensive plan is to... Property owners would accept a down zone for a tax benefit. I can only assume that the tax benefit would be a resulting loss in value, and therefore a lower tax appraisal, and therefore a lower tax bill. It's the type of tax benefit that has been provided to the owners of about, I don't know, 240 square miles of property within the unincorporated areas of Rutherford County. I don't think a down zoning classification conserves property values, as also stated in the comprehensive plan. Part of the comprehensive plan states to preserve property values. Property owners or farmers realize that their land value is less valuable as a result of decreased lot yield, they may still desire to sell their land. And in soon development, may actually take up more acreage because of the reduced density to meet the demand. It could take three times as much land to meet the demand under the RS15 classification because lot size is greater. You cannot legislate people's choices. They're still going to desire to live out from town, away from the hustle and bustle, where there are no streetlights, where they can see the stars at night. From the land development's perspective, that's what I get a lot of the times, is I want to go out there. And some of our most successful subdivisions were actually further out in the county. So you may not... If you try to increase that density, it may not work for you. The other part I don't understand is the expansion of over 300 acres of heavy industrial zoning classification at those three locations, and it may be greater than that. These are not good areas. You know where they are. I don't have a cursor to point to them or anything, but why would you put something that can support scrap yards and adult entertainment, as stated previously, as byright applications at those three areas? The road network doesn't serve it. It doesn't have the infrastructure capability to do it. Hickory Grove Road can't support it. Okay. There's one. I think this one was already fully zoned, H1, best I could tell from comparing it to the old map. But you can see, this is all residential. You've heard from some people there, this is all residential, and this is all residential around there. They can re-act that property and bring in 10, 15, 20 different uses on those properties. The minimum lot size available in the H1 zoning classifications for a specific use, I think, is 10,000 square feet, much smaller than one unit per acre, even smaller than the RM, which is now at 15,000 square feet. And in review of the zoning map, of the zoning ordinance, I'm not sure what's been accomplished because we've kept a whole lot of what was in there already, and we've just changed the names some. The R15 is now RM. The R40 is now RL. The R100 never been used, but it's in the zoning ordinance. So I'm not sure what we've accomplished in that area. If the intent in this ordinance was to preserve the character of Rutherford County, then why didn't we come up with a historic overlay district? I know there's a group currently in the county that's working to identify historic structures within the county that have historic relevance, whether by age or event that took place there. But yet, we chose not to even include a historic overlay district. That would do as much... You know, if you've driven by and said, "Well, I wish I had a tour down that old building. It had so much history to it." We didn't even make an effort to do that. I've given you some copies of my comments here and just a few other things that are in, just bullet points, I think is what you guys had wanted some of in the ordinance. And page 1, 2 in the zoning ordinance is where it refers to conserve the value of the land. Obviously, I can tell you, that doesn't happen there, that area. This is a four-mile outlay district. From there to there is about four miles. From there to there is about eight miles over. Can't conserve any property values surrounding that parcel, nor there, nor in there. In the purpose classification on page 41 for the RL classification, surely this is just some kind of typo or something, but it states that the agriculture... It says basically the purpose in there is... One of its purposes here is to allow agricultural activities which serve specifically the residents of the district. That's there. Surely those agricultural activities will serve more than just the people of that particular And some discussion about the conservation plan for subdivisions. My experience in developing property, I just don't think that you'll see that happen. You know, I've gone through the math with it, and that's what I do. I analyze property, determine its feasibility for subdivisions, and it's just not going to be something that the developer's going to go out there and do. He's not going to go out there and try to create a theme of save the knob and only get that kind of yield out of it. It's just not going to be a feasible product for the developer to get into. I know in the planned unit development regulations, you're keeping it the way it is now, but you've separated it out from the balance of the ordinance because you've made an amendment there that the applicant first has to go meet with the neighbors around it because the neighbor has more rights to your property than you do. So you've got to meet with them before you even get your due process going. I would at least consider making that change to the zoning text itself. I'm also real concerned that a rezoning application, say, if you said, "Oh, well, you can rezone this here to RM or some other classification in the future," I'm afraid that when it goes through the process, that you're going to look at it and say, "Well, does it fit the comprehensive plan?" We've already seen that the comprehensive plan is more restrictive than this, and you're going to say, "No, it doesn't." So, no, you can't rezone that, just right off.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. My comments will be much shorter. I'm Mike Linton. I live at 155 Spence Creek Lane in the county. That PowerPoint presentation was fantastic. I teach at MTSU, and if my colleagues had presentations as good as that, we'd have students in every single class. That was really marvelous. Thank you for that. The Comprehensive Steering Committee had 14 meetings that I know of. All of these meetings were open to the public, so this wasn't something which was hidden. And I believe there have been about 10 community open houses in addition to a number of public events where members of the community had an opportunity to hear about the plan and to offer at least informally comments on it. All in all, all in all, I think there have been 66... That's a pretty big number. 66 public chances for the citizens of Rutherford County to get information about this plan with the folks who put it together. 66, and that doesn't count tonight. So this hasn't been done in some smoke-filled room someplace. I haven't been on any of these meetings, but there has been an opportunity, and it has been open. The reason why I'm talking tonight is because this is just so, so, so important. Of all the things that is done in this room, this plan, wherever it is, is really the most important. If there's a problem with the plan, and there are lots of them, I generally support it. Generally support it. And there are lots of problems, but the main problem with the plan is it's only 25 years. A 50-year plan would be great, and here's why. I bought my first house from the walls, from snow and wall. That was a while ago. But the reason why I'm here in Rutherford County isn't because of that. It's because of what my dad did in Sally's front yard in 1941. And that was when some of the old folks here, you remember this, there were maneuvers here in Rutherford County before the beginning of World War II. And because of the character of Rutherford County, my dad fell in love with Rutherford County. He was from Southern Ohio. And he marched down Main Street, and he got to know the people in Rutherford County. He got to know the county. He fell in love with the county. And he also knew old Ben McFarland. Again, some of the old timers here know old Judge McFarland. And because of that, in 1941, when Dad had an opportunity to put a factory someplace in Tennessee, he put it in Murfreesboro. That's the Standard Register factory across the street from Pillsbury. And when I had an opportunity to take another teaching position, I came to MTSU. Now, a decision that was made in 1941 had consequences in the next millennium. We need a plan. It's really, really important, and not for us, for our posterity. And that's one of the things that rings so much when we read those founding documents, not about what was going on for us, but for our posterity, even sacrificing perhaps some of our rights voluntarily, voluntarily, or posterity.
Let him speak. Let him speak.
Or posterity. Well, my posterity is getting bigger the older I get.
Let him speak.
But that's why. Now, there's been a lot of concerns raised about eminent domain, and those are legitimate concerns, very legitimate concerns, particularly because of the Supreme Court case regarding New London, Connecticut. And many of you know about that, and this is a very serious issue. But what I think we need to be looking at is the character of the county for our children and our grandchildren. And this plan... And this plan may not be the plan that we want, but it is at least a good starting point. At least, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank you. I'm going to do a little mic adjustment here.
Hello, my name is Danny Brandon. I live in Garrison Cove. I want to talk about a couple of things. The main one is the cost. The one thing I got out of this plan is it's going to lessen private property ownership. If you look at it right now, we're at record unemployment, I think you'd all agree, across the country. Record debt across the country. This record debt, government debt, has taken, it's been accumulated with our current private property ownership as it is right now. What we're talking about is lessening the private property ownership. So if we take this plan and we adopt it, if right now, if we divide or take away half of the private property ownership, if we want to keep the same amount of tax dollars coming in, we have to double the taxes, the rate. Is that not right? If I've got 100 acres and all 100 is paying taxes, if I take half of it and give it to the county or the city, the city or the county's not going to be paying taxes. So to get the same revenue, I've got to double the rate on the other 50%. How many in here relishes the thought of having your property taxes go up yet again? I don't. And I'm going to tell you, I've had this, this idea, this thought, I was arguing with a city government, it's been a few years ago, about increasing property taxes. Wound up being interviewed on a local radio station, and had a guy call in. He said, "I've got a question for you. Do you make more money today than you did 10 years ago?" And I said, "Yes, sir, I suppose I do." "Do you expect you'll make more money 10 years from now than you today?" I said, "Yes, sir, I hope so." That's what I thought. You people are all alike. You don't see the cities and counties and states have to make more money just as you and I do. I said, "Okay." "Is that how you feel?" And he said, "That's exactly it." I said, "There's where you're wrong." I said, "Are you from this little town we're talking about?" He said, "I've been here all my life." I said, "Good, this ought to be easy for you." Because let me explain something. The city that I was talking about, I said, "They get three raises to my one." Why is it I, as a citizen, am expected to live with my, with my one income, yet my city can't live within their three raises? Here's an obvious question, how you figure that? I said, "Well, sir, is your property worth more today than it was, let's say, 20 years ago?" And for those of you here that are familiar with the rule of 72, divide 4 into 72, that says price is doubled every 18 years, right? So that means his house is worth double 18 years later. So I said, "If we go back 20 years, if your house is worth $50,000, 18 years later, it's worth $100,000. Your property taxes are based on assessed value. The city just got a raise." Raise number two, are there more houses in the city and less vacant lots around you today than there were, say, 20 years ago? In other words, did you used to have a vacant lot on one side and a vacant lot across the street, and now there's a house sitting there? Well, I suppose so. I said, "Okay, let's think about it." That vacant lot, it used to be, maybe it was assessed at 15, or 10, or 12, or $14,000. Now it's got 125, 150,000, a $200,000 house on it. City's getting taxes on that. Raise number two. And now raise number three, is the city limits of this little town bigger today than it was 20 years ago? He's like, "Well, yeah, I guess it is." I said, "There's number three. Why can't they live within what they expect me to live within?" And that's exactly what we're looking at right here. We're expected to follow guidelines. We're expected to follow, live within our budget. Right now, with record debt in this country, no city, no county, no state, the federal government cannot live within their means as it sits now, and they want to take more public land, less taxpayer dollars, and expect that they're going to be able to do with that. I don't think it's going to happen. That's my biggest concern, and it scares me to death to see this, another property tax increase. Thank you.
Mayo Taylor. I live at 1907 Bartway Drive in the city of Murfreesboro. And for the record, I live two miles from my work, and I ride a bike to work. But what I want to talk tonight about is the plan. I was on the steering committee for this plan. I was on the planning commission from 1996 to 2007. I resigned my position on the planning commission because of two items primarily. One was the blanket zoning for R15, which makes it virtually impossible for any other land use to get approved in this county. Being in mind that we are the only county in the state that conducts business this way. The second was that we were giving out conditional use permits like candy in this county. We have no plans for commercial development in the county. Consequently, all over the county with no planning whatsoever, we have commercial uses in residential areas. Why? Because we have no designation of properties for commercial uses. I don't love everything about this plan. I'm certainly not here as an advocate for quarries. I think the Rogers Quarry is an excellent example of an accidental use that's done by a special permit because there's been no planning for any quarrying in the county. Should we expand the parts that we have? Probably not. That probably needs to be looked at. I'm certainly not here as an advocate for the MPO bike lanes, and I'm not even an advocate for the, the downzoning to one-acre lots. I don't think the science is very good that one-acre development does very much to protect the natural values of, of the county. But what I want to talk against is status quo, the status quo we've had since 1984. And what I want to talk in favor of is the property rights of people who own property that is suitable for another type of development. What we've done for 30 years is we've stacked the deck. If you want to do an R15 zone, no public hearing. Come in, meet the technical requirements, you're done. If you have a piece of property that has excellent infrastructure, that's next to a highway, if you want to do a cluster zoning, a conservation zoning, we've had that on the books for decades. It's never been done. Why? Because it has to go through a, a public zoning process, and the R15 does not. It may well be that this plan requires some additional work, but what we do not want to do is just stay with what we've got. We don't have one type of household in the county. We have small households. We have much smaller households now than we did overall, average, than we did in 1984 when that was passed. We have people who don't want big yards. We have elderly people. We have families with single mothers. We have busy people who don't want to keep up a yard. We have people who want to be able to bike and walk. And what we've done is basically tell anybody who wants anything other than R15, single-family home, large lot, to go move to the city. And that's what has happened. In addition, virtually all commercial development has been driven into the city limits, taking the sales tax and other revenues with it. Why? Because we haven't planned to put it anywhere else. And if we don't do something to change the way we're set up now, that is what will continue to happen, and the same people that right now are crying about this plan and how horrible it's going to be, you'll be back here trying to challenge annexations as the city comes out further and further to your property. So I certainly encourage you to look at this. If it needs a little more study, that's fine, but do not throw it out the window.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tim Rudd. I live at 2904 Arlington Drive, Murfreesboro. I've lived in the county since 1968. I grew up here, and I've seen a lot of change, and I thank this community, this town, and Smyrna, where I grew up, is a beautiful place to live. And the very policies and regulations that built this community and made it such a desirable and affordable place to live need to be continued, not destroyed. This comprehensive plan is using and is based on what is called Agenda 21. Carl Dean has pushed, and the, recently, the Republican National Committee met, and regardless of politics, to get everyone in any committee across this country and every state to unanimously vote to condemn it for violating property rights, which is what the RNC did. Last month, earlier this month, excuse me, I'm also a state committeeman on District 13 of the, of the State Committee. They met at the State Capitol, also condemned this type of policies. You cannot violate people's property rights, no matter how well-intentioned. And whether you're Democrat or Independent or Republican, we are conservative-based values here, and we respect the Constitution. And to tell a farmer or a landowner in the county that while his neighbors for 200 years has profited on the same policies, that they no longer can because environmentalists want to preserve part of your land and are forcing you to give up your profits to set aside land as a green space. I'm all for green space, but if a county wants it, they need to pay for it at fair market value and not blackmail landowners and developers into donating it. What we're getting into, if this plan is passed, is written with the, this density and telling landowners and developers that basically the only thing you can afford to build are mansions. Because if you have to give up 10 to 30% of your land, and no one's going to pay for it, a developer can't afford to pay for it, you wouldn't make any profit. And a farmer can't afford to give it up, he wouldn't make enough profit. If we do this, the only homes that can be built in the county are mansions, or one-acre lots, and we can't get into that. We are a middle-class community. That's what built this community, and we need affordable homes for the next generation. Recently, a speaker said that we need to think about our heritage and what, our future generations. Well, we're not, we're telling future generations, we might as well put a sign up on the interstate, poor people and middle class, not welcome in Rutherford County because we won't have any affordable housing unless you're living in very, very condensed areas, which really devalues people's personal lives. We need to think about this very carefully. The dream of most people, our children, had been that I want to own a starter home of 1,200 to 1,500 square foot or larger on a quarter-acre lot in an affordable space. We're driving that out the window. This, this plan will destroy that. And I know all of you have the best of intentions, but this plan is being driven by a group of people that are anti-development and environmentalists who want to raise our taxes and raise the cost of living here. There's a reason why businesses aren't locating here, why we're not getting manufacturing jobs and white-collar, good-paying jobs, is because we're getting a reputation of being anti-development, anti-growth, and if we do that, we're going to lose more jobs in a time that we need to get more. So I plead with you, instead of increasing government regulations, increasing the size of government, and having government tell us what we can and can't do with our property, at these economic times, we need to make it a friendlier place to operate and locate jobs. We need, we need to deregulate and attract more jobs here instead of this plan. This plan will kill our economy and really violate people's constitutional rights. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Jim Sandman, and I live at 219 Declaration Drive in Las Casas. Been here since 1997, when I retired from the Navy. Planning is good, and I appreciate the comments from the professor earlier about planning, but central economic planning is something that sounds rather Soviet to me and socialist. Planning needs to be done by elected officials and with good public input, of course, and not by unelected bureaucrats. George Washington said, "Property rights and freedom are inseparable." If we allow property rights to be infringed upon more and more, as this Sustainable Development and Agenda 21 plan is, we will lose that freedom as well. The following cities and counties are members of what is known as International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives, otherwise known as ICLI, Local Environmental Initiatives. Nashville, Franklin, Oak Ridge, Signal Mountain, Chattanooga, Hamilton County, and Knoxville, I might be missing one. And those are cities and counties that have signed on to the United Nations Agenda of ICLI, International Council of Local Environmental Initiatives. I have a big problem with that. International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. Why do we need an international level of government telling us how to plan our neighborhoods? Let's let the, the free market do that as good Americans. Sustainable development is simply defined, is defined as, and, and it's current lifestyles and consumption patterns of the affluent middle class involving high meat intake, use of fossil fuels, appliances, home and work and air conditioning, and suburban housing are not sustainable, according to Maurice Strong, Secretary General of the United Nations Earth Summit in 1992. What is Agenda 21, briefly? It is a globalist attempt to impose United Nations environmental regulations aimed at controlling your local city and town through the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives created in 1991. This is not new, which already includes hundreds of member cities and towns in the United States and around the world. It will affect things like mandated civilian national service for youth, cutting the amount of goods and services you can buy and use. It promotes eventually the virtual elimination of private property ownership. This is what Agenda 21 does. Just look at their document. You can find it online, Agenda 21, Sustainable Development. It will deny you access to so-called wild lands, government control of fishery and farm harvests. And so the following things are threatened by this growth for Sustainable Development. Again, let's let the free market do this, by elected people, not by unelected. Agenda 21 will affect you, and I'll close with this, affects you by eliminating, eliminating your right to private property ownership. One of the 10 planks of the Communist Manifesto is abolishment of all private property. Abiding you from entering woodland and wetland areas, punishing you with higher prices at the store, restricting your civil liberties, restricting the number of children you can have. This is in the agenda. Restricting the amount of trash or waste you can dispose of, restricting the amount of water you can use, telling you how much to harvest on your farm or land, and forcing you to participate in community projects. I think it was Mark Twain said, "It is easier to stay out than to get out." So let's stay out of this idea of international bureaucracy coming down through Agenda 21, through Sustainable Development, through unelected bureaucrats, Metro Councils, so forth. And Mark Twain also said, "Sometimes I wonder whether the world is being run by smart people who are putting us on or by embassies who really mean it." Some of those folks at the federal level, I, I would have to say that there are, we're probably guilty of both. So I appreciate the time here tonight. The folks here are very helpful, and thank you for allowing this, to have this time to spend. And I do ask that you would, like Jake mentioned earlier, take your time on this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Schrader. I live at 676 Cottonfield Lane. And there's been a lot of interesting discourse this evening. Put it mildly, my head's starting to hurt. See, I own, I'm a property owner. I have a house in RS15, and I have money. And I consider that to be property. And there's been talk about the financial difficulties that we've got, and that we need to let market forces take a handle, get a, get control of it. Well, I'm not so sure the folks are interested in my property because it's only 15 square feet, 15,000 square feet with a house on it. That doesn't necessarily, I don't feel that I'm considered a property owner in this context. From the standpoint of, let's let the, the market make a determination as to what should happen with land in our county. I think we've, we are already working our way through the difficulties encountered by the marketplace going awry. It's called TARP, and the fact that we're not getting... We moved here in 1980. Mrs. Wall is over there, and Snow and Wall was one of the realtors that we worked with when we purchased our house back in 1980. New development requires additional infrastructure such as fire protection, law enforcement, schools, and roads. It also requires property tax increases to pay for it. That stuff is not free, just in case you don't know. That's how come our property taxes are going up. Some time ago, the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance did a study on impact fees, and we estimated that an impact fee for, on an average basis, for the 2,000 square foot residents in this county would run $4,400. Right now, we collect in the neighborhood of $1,500. So that, that means that for every 2,000 square foot house or residence that goes up in this county, the county comes up short three grand. Most of that is for schools. You may have noticed that we're putting up schools, just about one every year, and those schools cost around $50 million apiece. I don't remember what our debt is, but it's a big number. I keep thinking it's in the neighborhood of between $500 and $750 million. That's a lot of money. I can't imagine that kind of money. So I would like to suggest a zoning resolution with the idea of seeing what we can do to keep our property taxes down and correct the growth that we see in the county, so that it makes sense and reduces the impact that we're going to have on the rest of the people that live here. It isn't just folks in the, the big spenders like myself that have a 2,000 square foot house. It's a lot of other people, too, and they need some help. Comprehensive plan and zoning resolution should need the, should reduce the need for additional infrastructure and additional taxes. I think the community needs some additional time to review the zoning resolution as it addresses the welfare for all of our citizens. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Send one else, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Averwater, 2100 Sheedham Springs Road. On behalf of the 300 or so members of the Rutherford County Home Builders Association, we appreciate this opportunity to speak to this commission this evening. We certainly recognize the need for you to have a toolbox that you can work out of with some concise and, and regulations that you can enforce consistently across the area, and it also gives the developers an idea of where they have allowances to do things, so that they can, they can plan a little bit better and are not chasing off in other directions. There are some areas of concern with it, though, as we go in that direction. One of the original goals of this plan is to slow the rate of land consumption so that there is land for future uses down the road. And one of those that's a good, probably a good tool for, for you to look at is the use of the PUD, the Plan Unit Development. That is a tool that allows some creativity by developers to look at a piece of land and say, okay, we can do certain things that would be attractive to the neighbors, it would make this something desirable, a place that would live. Also can increase density and achieve the goal of less infrastructure, keeping those taxes down. If you can get more people with fewer streets, that increases the amount of service and maintenance that are required on those less miles for school buses to run and that sort of thing. You guys are all aware of that. However, in one area of this, it, for a residential PUD, it requires a minimum of 20% of the gross project area to be devoted to open space usable, and of which half of that would be usable open space. Now, you have to keep in mind, though, that every piece of land is unique, and if you simply add an arbitrary requirement of 20% or 10% or 30% or any number, without a comparable increase in density, and looking at all the other factors that are involved with that piece of land, you're going to create an unworkable burden for cost-effective development in the PUD model. This essentially forces people to go back to the old model that you're trying to, to get away with and try to use that of either a non-PUD, even if that will be available in the future, or a piecemeal fashion that you certainly don't want to see that increases sprawl and, and provides, actually provides less green space. Another area that we have concern with is, I recognize the importance, that the county wants to use a lot of the federal regulations when it comes to the flood plains and that sort of thing, but that doesn't necessarily make, make up good. One area in here reads about, "Located within Rutherford County are unmapped streams where areas of special flood hazard are neither indicated nor identified." And then it goes on to give the rules involved with that. Well, we'd need something a little bit more descriptive about, there just are areas out there, but we don't really, they're not mapped, and we can't really tell you where those are, but we'll let you know when we see them. That's, that's a bit broad, and we'd like to see that defined just a little bit more, too. Thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, sir. Send one else, which is speak.
Good evening. Maybe you'll be blessed with me being the last speaker. My name is Susan Allen, and I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I'm the current president of the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, and have served on the County Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee the last three years. My goal in being part of this process has been, has been to work on a sensible land use plan that will not create a tax burden for all Rutherford County citizens, and will improve the quality of life and preserve what is uniquely Rutherford by solving the many problems created by the current zoning. Attached to my comments, you'll find a page from the comprehensive plan that illustrates what this county will look like if the zoning is not changed by 2035. Having been a community activist for the past 10 years, I firmly believe that the citizens being, the importance of citizens being engaged in the government process. From the very beginning of this procedure, straight through to tonight's public hearing, citizens have had the opportunity to participate. This zoning ordinance is a way to guide the county toward the vision, values, and goals the community expressed. I think most of us can agree with the three principles, with three principles that historically have been the basis of Republican philosophy. One, elected officials should be careful with taxpayer dollars. Two, as many decisions as possible should be made at the level closest to the people as possible. And three, a sense of public and individual responsibility. The comprehensive plan process and the proposed zoning ordinance need to fulfill those three principles. One, guiding growth to areas where infrastructure is in place and creating a positive atmosphere for the revitalization of our historic rural communities will allow better use of our taxpayer dollars. Two, the myriad opportunities for public participation in this process have allowed all interested citizens to give positive input and have their concerns heard. And three, we as individuals need to consider that we all have a shared interest in our county's social, economic, and political future. The land use controls set in place by this ordinance should assure that property owners, be they individuals or corporations, will not harm others outside their boundaries. A sensible zoning plan and ordinance needs to protect established residential areas from heavy industrial encroachment and prevent subdivisions from being built where, and this is from the zoning ordinance, quote, "should prevent subdivisions from being built where, quote, 'health, safety, morals, convenience, order, prosperity, and other aspects of the general welfare,' end quote, are compromised. With countywide R-15 zoning, this has been problematic, to say the least. I urge this body to reexamine the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, and correct situations where the public welfare is not protected." Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Send one else which to speak. Send one else which to speak. Anyone else which to speak, or we're going to close the public hearing? No one? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing, bring you back to the planning commission. Questions? Comments? Steve?
I was just getting the microphone to think about what I was getting ready to say. You called on me, so. First thing, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out tonight and taking time out of y'all's busy schedules and showing that this community cares. And that's what we're trying to do as a planning commission to better our Rutherford County that we live in. No matter where you're at, this deals with all of us. So we've still got some issues. Like you said, I think I've counted 18, and I've got about four pages here full of notes. So with that being said, we've still got some work to do. We knew that before even this meeting. We've had some, I think, five outside community-type meetings.
Four community meetings, plus the two work sessions in front of the planning commission.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Well, this is our first public hearing here on the planning commission side. So whatever ordinance we get, as I think Mr. Cantrell said back, even with the city timeframe, it don't matter what city you're in or county you're trying to, you're not going to have a perfect ordinance, period. But we've still got some work to do, and we're going to try to make this a better ordinance tomorrow than what it is actually today that we're looking at. So with that in hand, I make a motion that we study this, look at this, if it's next month, if it's the next month, whatever it is, take these questions that we've got, three pages of, y'all been making them, our folks is helping us trying to do a perfect ordinance here for Rutherford County. Y'all been making notes as well, I've been noticing. And a lot of good suggestions, a lot of good comments, a lot of good things, just a little tweaking would fix some things, some major things, too, in there that we're going to have to deal with. So I'll make a motion that we send it back to, actually, our planning director.
Staff.
Staff. Look at these questions, get us some answers to these questions. We may need to add in on one of our meetings or something, or to tell in of a meeting of next month or whatever, to talk about some of the answers to these questions that we've had tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I have that motion. Have a second.
Actually, these questions that we've gotten tonight, these issues that we've gotten tonight, get some answers to these issues and questions, implement these into the plan, or not really implement them, but have them out here so we can implement them into the plan, or take them out, or add, or adjust. Some great, great issues tonight that we knew some, there's been some added, and we're all here to make Rutherford County a better place. So we've got time, we've been working on it two years, it ain't going to have a problem to work on it three or four more months or something. We'll, we'll get to the bottom of it, we'll have a good plan, and then right after we have a good plan, we'll have to tweak it and fix it again, I'm sure. So with all of us working together, though, we can have a good plan.
Okay, we had a motion. Did you second that motion? We're going to have some discussion, I know, but.
I seconded the motion.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed? We're going to discuss it after. We had a motion, we had a second. But, okay, let's have discussion then, we're right over here with the discussion. Rhonda.
The only comment that I wanted to make is, as I have read the comprehensive plan closely, and I've heard some misinformation that's been given tonight, and that's really my number one concern, that people act on accurate information. And so I really want, if anybody has heard anything tonight that gives you any reason for specific concern, whether you're in the room or you're watching this, I really encourage you to contact the planning department and ask them specifically what your questions or what your concern is, because sometimes things can be taken out of context or misunderstood completely innocently. I'm not accusing anybody of perpetuating false information, I'm just saying it's really important if there's something in the, in the plan that concerns you specifically, I really encourage you to engage staff directly without, you know, passing along false information unintentionally.
Okay. Jeff.
Mr. Chairman, my only concern was, I heard the original motion, send it back, and I'm just wondering what it is. The whole deal is that the comprehensive plan is already passed.
Correct. The comprehensive plan has been.
There's nothing to send back because it's already passed. If we're talking about adjusting that comprehensive plan, I'm all for that, okay? Just like you said, Mr. Sandlin, I'm all for that, but the comprehensive plan, I understand, is already passed.
Yes, the planning commission has adopted. The public hearing tonight was regarding the zoning ordinance and the map, and Mr. Sandlin, I guess, I kind of assumed that's what you were talking about, sending that back. I know you said plan, but I was, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were really referring more to the, the ordinance and the map itself, yes, sir. Okay.
I'm still a little bit confused because I think what Steve, what I heard him talking about was some of the points, I'm, I'm going to throw out an arbitrary number, but 95% of what these folks are talking about was the comprehensive plan. It's already passed. It passed this body and it's in place.
Correct.
Now, for us to go back means that we would have to adjust that plan, and is that what we're talking about?
That's what I was thinking, yes, sir.
You're talking about the zoning. Yes, we're talking about the zoning ordinance, right here, this purple book that's been quoted in a number of, yes, in that map.
Yes, and there were a number of comments specifically regarding industrial zoning, rock quarry, of course, the, the whole RL versus RM. I mean, those are things that we talked about tonight that were directly relevant to the zoning ordinance and the map itself. So, I mean, those are kind of things, I mean, I agree, and like I've told the number of people who I've spoke with, who have called our office, who came to any of our meetings, we realize that this is just a draft, that that map is just a draft. We knew that there were going to be changes to it. That was the whole purpose of having this meeting in the first place. I mean, yes, we are legally required to have it, but at the same time, that's how we get public input in this process, so it serves two purposes.
That's exactly what I'm looking for, thank you. So addressing the questions that brought up before the public tonight at this meeting, we can examine those and take a look at them and see if the plan needs adjustment.
Incorrect. And that's something, whenever a comprehensive plan or any kind of, and I'll, I'll talk specifically about the plan at this point, whenever a plan is done, it's, of course, done for a period of time. Generally, most plans are done for 20, 25 years. That's just a general, and that's been that way for quite some time. It is staff's responsibility, it's the planning commission's responsibility, it's the people, the general public at large's responsibility to use that plan and to identify when changes need to be made to it. I mean, most of the time, there are inputs, I mean, most of the time when you have a plan that needs to be updated, most literature that you read will recommend that you update a plan every five years. Now, that doesn't mean you have to wait five years before a plan is changed. A plan can be changed, you know, months after it's been adopted. Just because you don't know what's going to happen two months from now, let alone 20 years, things can change. This document, the zoning, as well as the comprehensive plan, are more fluid documents. They can be changed. Now, there is a process, there's a legal process involved as far as public hearings, amount of notice that has to be given for those public hearings, so it's not just something you can come in and do in a couple of weeks, it is a little longer than that, but there is a process for it. There's a process for amending the zoning ordinance, there's a process for amending that map, the same process we have right now. The same public hearing that we're having right now on the document itself and on the map is the same process that will be used for amendments, with the small exception or. the general public at largest responsibility to use that plan and to identify when changes need to be made to it. I mean, most of the time, there are inputs, I mean, most of the time when you have a plan that needs to be updated, most literature that you read will recommend that you update a plan every five years. Now, that doesn't mean you have to wait five years before a plan is changed. A plan can be changed, you know, months after it's been adopted. Just because you don't know what's going to happen two months from now, let alone 20 years, things can change. This document, the zoning, as well as the comprehensive plan, are more fluid documents. They can be changed. Now, there is a process, there's a legal process involved as far as public hearings, amount of notice that has to be given for those public hearings, so it's not just something you can come in and do in a couple of weeks. It is a little longer than that, but there is a process for it. There's a process for amending the zoning ordinance, there's a process for amending that map, the same process we have right now. The same public hearing that we're having right now on the document itself and on the map is the same process that will be used for amendments, with the small exception, or change, rather, when you're looking at amendments to a zoning ordinance, you're only required a 15-day notice before the county commission. As with this, you're required 30 days. That's really the only difference between the two. So the process in and of itself for changing it is there. This isn't something that, once we approve it, this is all it's going to be for the next 20, 25 years. That was never the intent of this plan, and it never will be the intent of this plan, because we know full well that change will happen, things that we cannot foresee. So that's why these are meant to be more fluid documents.
Mike. To run, or sort of to Rhonda's earlier point, would it be all right if we ask everyone that's got a concern to write their concern down, address it if they can, specifically to the number in the ordinance? Give them to staff, let staff organize them, because a lot of them are going to be redundant. Then in a work session, us address those questions one by one, open to the public, but a work session, not a time for public comment at that time.
And I will say that when Mr. Cantrell was up here making his presentation, he had the handout, the last two or three pages of his document actually do that very thing that you're discussing. So, I mean, this is a good starting point for us.
Any questions you've got, and they're going to overlap eventually, we know that. And then y'all sort through them, get the best-worded questions that refer to a specific topic, and then us have a work session sometime after the first of the year.
Is that doable? Doug?
I'm sorry.
Is that doable?
Yes, sir, it is. Now, depending on the amount of comments we get, will depend on how long that'll take, but a staff will work as diligently as possible to get this to you, hopefully next month, but we'll see what kind of responses we get.
All right, we get comments, too. Rich?
I just wanted to get an assurance that before anything is done, if this passes and we defer this back to staff, the purple book, there will be another public hearing, and everybody will be allowed to come back and.
If you'd like another public hearing, yes, sir.
All over again, or have an opportunity to come up with new questions.
We can do that. We can make sure that happens, yes, sir.
And just for clarification, as far as on my part, the comprehensive plan was only approved by the planning commission, where it's merely a guideline.
That's correct.
And not a law.
That's correct.
But the ideal behind this, whenever we get it to whatever point, if it is ever approved, it is to send it on to the county commission, and it will become law.
Are you talking the zoning ordinance?
The zoning ordinance.
Yes, the zoning, that will become law.
This will be approved whenever, whatever shape and form it's in, when it leaves us, it is, this body, it is supposed to go on to the county commission.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And it will become hard and fast until it is amended by the county commission.
It will not become, it will not become the county zoning ordinance until the Board of Commissioners approves it.
But it will become law, where the comprehensive plan, supposedly, if it all were to happen, the comprehensive plan is merely a guideline by a recommending body, it is not law.
That has not gone to the Board of Commissioners. If it goes to the Board of Commissioners, but it has not.
But it has not, and it has not at this point in time recommended to go to the Board of Commissioners.
Not at this time, no, sir.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I think we've got to be a lot more cautious with this.
Comments, Mattan? Go ahead.
Make sure we do everything correctly, and take our time, and go slow with this, all I want to say, and make sure there would be another opportunity for a public hearing.
Yes.
Pretty much the same thing as what Will has said here, but I think it's important that we do have another public hearing, that people can come back and, after we go over this, because I have had individuals that also have mentioned some other things that haven't been brought out here tonight that we take a look at. I know for veterinarian clinics and things of this type, to maybe take another look at some of those things, to also give another review of those, to take a look at those and be involved in that. And I think, sort of, is a challenge to the commissioners sitting here, too, that if we know of things that maybe have brought up questions to us, to give that to the staff as well, to put that in there. And I'm glad you brought out the fact about the comprehensive plan, because that was the understanding, when I did make the motion, that we did do this, that it is a tool that we're to use, that it's not the law, that it can be changed, it can be modified, it can be worked with, and it's for something for us to use and for other individuals to use as well when they're planning these things, and to be used that way.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Greg, I'd like.
Yeah, just one question, we're not, we're closing.
To answer Mr. Robinson's question.
Jake, to your point, let me reiterate, I wanted the public to submit, that's what I want, the public, because we've heard a number of questions tonight, some of them will be repetitive, but put those in a concise method so we can take them one by one and work through them.
Just submit, if you can, submit it to our office, to myself or Ms. Simsley, our assistant director. And again, what we're talking about here is the zoning ordinance, not so much the comprehensive plan, so if everybody can remember that.
It can be typed or emailed.
Either way, I mean, if they want to fax it, if you want to run up to my office and drop it off or mail it, you want to come up to my office and talk to me about it, talk to us about it. We've been accessible throughout this whole process, and we will continue to be accessible throughout this whole process.
On the comprehensive plan, at one point in time, we had a link on the website to leave comments several months ago. Could we not revive that for this?
We.
And have something on the website where people.
For the zoning, you mean? For the zoning? Yeah, I can talk with.
Because of that comment Mike's talking about, if we had a link on the website for people who are computer savvy, they could do it that much simpler.
We'll talk with our OIP, OIT folks about that, yes, sir.
To be fair to staff, I wish everybody would be very specific in their questions, reference this document, page and number, if you can. I think it'd be totally unfair to staff to make very general comments saying, I don't like the plan. We want to know exactly what area, exactly what page, exactly what number, as close as you can get it.
And then, if, it would be very helpful, too, if whoever's submitting that can put their contact information, the person, you know, who you are, contact information.
Anonymous.
No, anonymous, yeah, we need.
Nothing anonymous.
Yeah, so we have some accountability as far as, okay, so-and-so asked this question, this is how we're responding to this question. It's hard to, or if we need to contact a person, because maybe we don't understand the content, maybe it's asked in such a way, well, does this person mean this, or do they mean that? We can have a way to contact them for that.
All right, Doug, what's our timeframe on this, when we're going to look at some of these questions?
We can report back to you at the next planning commission meeting in January. Of course, we're not having a daytime meeting this month because of the holidays. I mean, a lot of it's going to depend on how many comments we get. You know, if we don't get many comments, it probably won't take that long. Now, if we get them coming in left and right, I mean, and I agree with Mr. Vaught, that there're probably going to be a lot of duplicates, you know, people asking the same general thing, but a lot of it's just going to depend on how much we get.
Well, we can look at some of them the next, January night, correct?
Yes, we can, we can report back to the ones we have responded to, yes, we can certainly do that.
Well, on what we have tonight, I mean, we've got 18 people that's made comments tonight, and a lot of them are very pinpoint what we're looking at. So we've got to address those first, and if there's any more, pass this, then, I mean, we'll address those, too.
Fair enough, yes, sir.
But definitely, there's 18 people that spoke here, and a lot of them are right on the money as far as what it is, so. Close enough to know, we know, pull it up and what they're talking about, so.
Yes, sir.
And for the public watching, and far as the public here, too, and for staff and for planning, for everybody to be clear, we're going to look at this next month, adjust to there, but before we come to having a, an approval or up or down vote on this, we're going to have a public hearing on it.
Yep, that's what you're instructing me to do, that's what we'll do.
And then, once it's sent to full commission, then it's going to be a public hearing on the full commission level, too. So if you still got issues, you know, you've got an opportunity to speak here, too. So I want folks to understand that.
Yeah, let me just make sure I'm clear, that what you're asking for at the next planning commission meeting is a report. You don't want, we're not doing a public hearing yet, you just want the report first and then the public hearing after.
Not a public hearing there, we, more of a work session for us to.
Right.
Back and forth and try to hammer this out.
Right, right. Okay, Mike, get another question?
Hey, I've got one more comment. I was steering, I was planning commission rep on the steering committee. Now, I went to two out of four of the initial meetings, and takeaway that I came away with was, and it was a good mix of people, some recent, people that moved in recently, some that had been here 20 years, some that had been here, as my family has, for over 200 years. But there was not, the sentiment was not, I'm here, shut the gate now. The sentiment was, we love this county, and these are people that cared enough to come out to those meetings, we love this county, we want to preserve a small part over the next 50 years, 35 years, you know, set the stage for something, preserve some of what brought us here. And, you know, I think that's a little bit of what this document tries to address. We have operated in this county for the last 30-plus years, right at 30 years, with the most liberal zoning laws in the state. There is not, there is not another county like it. If we adopted this tonight, it would still be the most liberal zoning laws in the state. Mr. McKee, Mr. Bill McKee's brother used to work for the state in the extension service, and he said, he told me in the late 90s, there was not another county in the state where you had an automatic zoning. So, you know, I just want, I want the public to be aware of that, that what has gone on here is not the norm everywhere else. So a couple, Jake and I've had a good discussion, robust discussion, we'll probably have another one. But to his point about the bike trails, and I can assure you that Mr. Ernie Johns was not leading anyone down a trail that would take away anybody's property rights, because he's a longtime builder, longtime developer. If a bike trail down the highway is fine, I assure Jake that I'll be there holding hands in front of the bulldozer if they want to put a bike trail down John McFarland's or Jerry Kelton's, my neighbors that own property along the river, I'll be right there with you on some of those issues. So I think we have to address some of those issues and figure out exactly where we are in this plan. But, you know, I just wanted everybody to know that the people that came out earlier, that, you know, that their goal was to preserve a small, that was my takeaway from it, a small part of what, you know, what we love about this county.
Okay. All right, thank you. The, I guess the motion was, after all that discussion, it was just to defer it and not take action on it tonight, right? And that was your second, all right? Take the questions and study and have a work session. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, no? All right, we've got a work session, got a lot of work to do, got a lot of work. It's going to be more than one meeting, I assume, that we'll take to do all this. Any more comments?
No, sir, we have nothing further.
I do have one comment, and with our bylaws, we are appointing a committee of Vincent and Veronica and Pettis. This works out great. We have to appoint a new chairman and vice chairman for next year, and it works out great for that, so you three are a committee to work on chairman and vice chairman for next year, and it will change on January the 9th. Okay? You three need to get together tonight, or?
Who was, who was the, who would you, I didn't quite catch everybody you said, Mr. Chairman, who did you appoint to the committee?
Veronica and Vincent and Pettis.
Veronica, Vincent, and Pettis, thank you.
All right, any other question, Rhonda? Anybody? Mike, a motion? Second that? All in favor of that motion, say aye.